First on the agenda is public comments. Is there any public like to make a, any comments on work session related items tonight? State your name and address and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Absolutely, I'll be much shorter than that. My name is Robert Hines, address is four six four four Fox Farm. And also fifty Arthur. We were, I'm from the RMTZ group, I'm one of the owners. So I'm one of the people that sat in the line for the week. I don't know if you guys understand this, but the marijuana process has been a very difficult one. Mainly because we had short time periods. And what this does for us is we have to pay double to triple for normal things, for plans, for anything that, our entire application, we have to pay double for. And I understand tonight that we're talking about possibly allowing more licenses in, which to somebody, for me, obviously, we were first in line. We followed all the rules. We did everything that was asked of us. We spent a ridiculous amount of money on getting our application in. I personally, as one of the owners, waited out in line. We were that dedicated to this process. And I think it's just grossly unfair for two, that reason, because we followed all the rules. And then also because there's financial, we, coming into a town, if we knew it was unlimited, we would factor that into how much money we would spend on buildings, on the entire And now where we, it might be a situation where there might be eight or 10. We have to, what we do have to realize is that, yes, there's not other cities around the area, but there's only so many that can be profitable. There's only so many. And we are gonna, you know, the city and the dispensary owners, will make a good profit at, you know, five, but if we get eight in here, it's gonna be, they're gonna have a tough time surviving. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the two eighty law, but we can't write off employees, we can't write off anything other than cost of goods. So until that goes away, it's gonna be tough being in this business in general, otherwise an oversaturated market. So I just implore you to think, think about how many people we can really serve. Thank you, have a good night there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Ryan Fitzsimmons, two oh nine Saint Mary's Parkway, Manistee and seventy Arthur Street. I want to make a couple of points too. I was hoping that you guys think to increase the number of permits available, not only for recreational retailers, but for grow licenses. As an applicant that came in just a little bit late in the process, we still feel that there's enough revenue to go around from the area that would support a number of businesses, especially that none of the micro-business licenses will most likely be fulfilled because of the increased cost and small scale of those businesses. So if you were potentially considering five additional micro businesses and those won't go through, then maybe reducing that number and increasing the number of retail businesses. The, the city stands to benefit not only by developing more properties and allowing more businesses to come in, but how the excise tax is handled is that the state, any business in Manistee operating, those, your revenue, your exact numbers aren't pulled directly from that business at the year end, it's the total pool. So the more licenses you give out, the greater share of the total pool that Manistee will receive. And contrary to the last gentleman, the total revenue from marijuana sales by our estimates or projected numbers are somewhere north of thirty million, and that would support a large number of these businesses going in. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Paul Adamski, five nine one five Tompkins Road, also a thirty-three-year owner of seventy-four Arthur Street. Again, when this came to us, everything through the planning commission and through the city planning commission was all on a first come, first served basis. And again, we spent a lot of money to be in that position, to get our things in order, to put everything together, again, to stand in line for a week, to get our number, to get our application submitted, and to, if it was gonna be where you were just gonna open up these licenses, we would've took our time, it would've cost us a whole lot less money and been in the same position. I feel that you made up your mind in the beginning on how many licenses you were gonna give out and what the steps were gonna be. We followed them steps, and now to increase that to us is like just slapping us in the face. I mean, we're all business people, been here a long time, and I sure would hope that you would stand on your ground until maybe things get off, maybe in the future that's something you want to do. But right now, there's not even one out there yet, and you're already wanting to increase the number of licenses. For what reason? The money, or has anybody done any study what it would do or what it wouldn't do? I think we should just stay with what was brought to us and let us get underway with what we're doing and look at this again maybe in the future. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robin Paulus. I represent Echo His Love here at five twenty-five Michael Street. I actually am a resident of Mason County, but I represent Echo His Love. I came tonight because I know homelessness in Safe Harbor is on the docket to discuss. And so I have with me some statistics to share with you of how Safe Harbor has served our community over the last ten years, and some of the challenges that we face serving the homeless. For instance, last year we served thirty homeless, it took over two hundred volunteers, and we provided twelve hundred and sixty-three bed nights at a cost much lower than it would have been in a hotel or in jail if they were picked up off the streets. On average, that's about our normal, anywhere between the mid twenties to the thirties, so we're not a high-volume type of shelter that rotates between the churches. Some of the challenges that we face are our church leadership changes from time to time, and this year we saw a great number of open weeks unfilled by our church partner host sites because one church couldn't do it for one reason, one couldn't do it for another, and we were more than fifty percent of holes of the schedule, and we're likely going to have to close it down for the season. Thankfully, our churches were contacted again, recognized the need and did step up, and we are filled with the exception of two weeks toward the end of the season currently with host sites. But that brings to our discussion that we've had at some of our church meetings and with pastors, the desire to have a certain set location that would make it easier for our church partners and the community to come volunteer for this needed ministry and needed service in our community. One of the things that we see as a challenge is zoning and where that type of property or shelter would be allowed in the city. So I hope in your discussion tonight that those things will be addressed, as well as the need for continuing. But ten years ago, when this started, this was a Band-Aid, it still is a Band-Aid. We need our low-income housing, we need day programming, but these individuals are certainly worth the time, and we have a success rate of eighty percent on average of giving them housed and/or into another sheltering program. So if you'd like, I can pass these around to anybody for your information tonight as you're discussing what the stats are. And if I have a moment, this is a letter from three of our Safe Harbor guests, the very first winter that we started, in the winter of oh nine and oh ten. And this is written of April twenty-nine, two thousand and ten. To all committee members and volunteers, we want to send our deepest thanks to anyone involved in the past winter Safe Harbor Shelter Program. It has been an amazing example of a community living in faith and putting its Christian's beliefs into practice. Those of us with severe health problems likely could not have survived the winter without the shelter you provided. You always treated us with dignity and respect, and this is very important and lacking in too many shelters. When people find themselves homeless, they often have little left but their self-respect, and if not allowed that, there is nothing. So thank you for all your friendship and encouragement and support. We hope you will continue this program with growing success in the future winters. And then it was signed by three individuals, one who's passed on, and two that are still housed in their own homes. So it is a program that makes a big difference. Thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Bertram, one nine two three zero Fowler Road. I represent a developer in regards to twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty-four, forty-eight, fifty-two, and sixty-four Arthur Street. We had kind of been the first ones within the community when you guys opened up the marijuana. The ordinance since we had secured locations has already changed three times. I received a call the day that the planning department was walking people over to the city hall to get their rep, sign notary at the register of deeds. Later that afternoon, I received a call from a local realtor, Theron, out of Lighthouse Realty, who was selling spots in the line for five thousand dollars, or to whoever the highest purchaser was willing to pay for those spots that they had outside. Unfortunately, my client did not feel that he needed to be strong-earned into paying somebody for the spot in the line. We unfortunately were number six. We did turn in our application. We are asking that tonight you do consider, you've already changed it three times, if you would consider changing it to allow unlimited or just a few more even recreational. We would like to be able to continue with the development that we plan to do in your guys' overlay district, but unfortunately, if we are not able to secure one of those more valuable licenses, then it's not going to be profitable for us to invest inside of your guys' community. So tonight, when that is of discussion, I hope that you please do consider increasing the amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Keith Slinski, five eight three oh, Neckama, Michigan. I worked really hard on this project, my friend Rob, and really trying to get a permit, and that meant staying on top of every step along the way, you know? And I feel that every other person in the area that was trying to get a permit had the exact same opportunity to fill one of those five spots. So tonight, I asked you just to really think through what you want to do there, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Joyce Reed, and I live at one seven seven Eighth Street in Manistee, and I've been working with Safe Harbor now for about four years through Faith Covenant. And it's not just adults. We served four hundred and forty-four children bed nights since we started. They come, the families come at six o'clock at night, they get a warm meal, they get a warm blanket in a bed, safe place, and then in the morning, they get breakfast, and then they're dropped off at different places. The cost to the community is unbelievable. We have been told that the shelters in Benzie and in Luddington are full, so they're bringing people from those counties to our county. There are no Safe Harbor places in Luddington for women. They have men shelters, but no women shelters, other than domestic violence and a halfway house. But if you're just homeless, there's no place for you to go. Last winter, the police brought a lady from our, from Luddington, Luddington, dropped her off in our parking lot. She had a heart attack that night, we had to take her to the hospital, she went to Traverse City, where she was in intensive care for five days, and they discharged her to the street. And so she came back to us, and she walked back and forth in Manistee all winter, because we don't have a place for them to go during the day. And last winter was a bad winter. She needed a heart valve replacement, they wouldn't do it unless she had safe housing for recuperating. We did find that for her, and she has had the surgery. Please consider how you can help, the money is unbelievable, the churches carry the burden, the volunteers bring in the food, the volunteers stay overnight, they watch the people, they drive the people around, they're good people, they just need some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, I'm George Butler, five four seven First Street, Manistee. I'm also one of the pastors of the Tabernacle Church. I'm very interested in these comments about the poor and those that are homeless. I have a greater interest in those that are not yet homeless and preventing homelessness. And so I'm concerned about people who can't, they're employed, they're the Alice category or the poverty category, but they can't afford a six hundred and fifty dollar rent. At thirty to forty percent of their income, they need rents that are five hundred dollars, some need them at four hundred dollars, some need them at three hundred dollars. And we should think about the tiny house movement where people are after less and smaller in order to have greater freedom in life, financial freedom or freedom to do what they want to do without house cleaning or maintenance or upkeep. It would be nice if we could find some tiny opportunities in the city of Manistee. I'm thinking about something like a rooming house, where you can rent a room for three hundred dollars a month, you can lock it up, it's yours. But within the building, there's also a kitchen, you can use a dining room, a laundry bathroom, and so there are those shared resources. So whether it's a rooming house or a boarding house where food is included, smaller apartments, where people can pay for it, where they have dignity and safety, and they're well-provided for. Tiny is what we need. The poor can afford to pay their way if we provide it. They can afford a six hundred and fifty dollar rent. Those who are maintaining old stock houses, it takes six hundred and fifty to maintain that place and to pay its expenses, so they have to charge that. A better ideal is to go into some of our older buildings, historic buildings, larger buildings, and create this kind of a build-out where you've got apartments that are more like two hundred and fifty square feet. The city now allows down to five hundred square feet, but not less. I'd like to see a four hundred square foot apartment, a three hundred square foot apartment, with rents that are at four hundred dollars or three hundred dollars for people, where it can be locked up. So I'm looking for both contributors from the nonprofit sector, I'm looking for investors that believe that they can do well, but do it tiny. So you take a same building, you just divide it into more segments, instead of one larger apartment that'll get you six fifty, how about two smaller ones in the same space that'll get you still six fifty, but it's in two twenty-five and two twenty-five? Bad math, I'm sorry, three twenty-five and three twenty-five. So that's what I'm looking for, and I'll be with, you know, the housing folks that talk about the possibility. We don't have, as I understand it, in our zoning code, we don't have anything for that kind of provision. So I want to work with you to provide for our citizens, to provide places for college students, retired vet, a homeless mom, people that have income, but they need a safe, secure place. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Goodman, I live at nineteen twenty-five Twelve Street, and I work for Community Mental Health. And I'm here just to tell you that I have now been appointed the coordinator for the Northwest Region Coalition to End Homelessness. This is a state initiative, and with it comes state funds as well, but I have just taken over kind of a failing group. Not the group is failing, but the, the participation and the, maybe the direction of this group has kind of been lagging for a while. So I'll be taking that over, and I have already got some commitment from the county. Our treasurer is interested in participating because of the land banks, so I'll be reaching out maybe to the pastor and others who want to participate. I'd like to get all the groups together, we all have an investment in this. You know, we have sixty percent of our kids at the public school system, it fall in the poverty range, I mean, we have a problem. And these people are what they call couch surfing, so we need to do something. But I agree with the pre-planning, working with people who may have budgeting problems, may not know how to manage their budgets, so they're not able to afford what, where they're staying, so things like that too, so it's a process. But I just want you to know that I'm out there, and I'll be willing to work with anybody in the city who wants to deal with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving right on. Next on the agenda is Substance Education Awareness C Youth Presentation. I understand that, whoops, I understand that the kids, some of the kids are sick and they won't be making a presentation tonight. Discussion on Downtown Development Authority, TIF Plan. Caitlin, somebody.
Good evening. TF Taxi Addict, on behalf of the Downtown Development Authority. I chair the TIF Committee that is composed of Karen Goodman and Barry Lynn and myself. The plan that, the TIF plan that you have is the latest version of a series of plans that started over a year and a half ago. What is a bit different in this plan is the allocation of TIF revenues that we anticipate receiving in the next twenty-five years. And the second item is the length of the TIF capture period being twenty-five years. About a month and a half ago, we thought we were, we had a final draft to bring to you, and that plan was based on a TIF capture of twenty years, and we had allocated the TIF revenues to various projects in the downtown. I'd be glad to answer any questions, specific questions, but I would like you to look at Tables one and two A on pages twelve and sixteen of the plan. Those are the two tables where we summarize the projects that the DDA proposes to undertake during the TIF capture period, assuming that the TIF is renewed. You will notice that based on a request about a month ago at the last DDA meeting by the West Shore Community College for assistance with the redevelopment of the building on the old, what we call the Glicks Building, in the northwest corner of River Street and Maple Street. The request by West Shore Community College was for about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so in order to accommodate this request for a project that the DDA feels that it's appropriate and desirable for that location in the DDA, in the district, we reallocated funds we had for various projects. And as you see on the table on page sixteen, we initially allocated half a million towards facade enhancements, and also we allocated for improvements to the Riverwalk area around the proposed redeveloped building. After some discussion and understanding that those funds will have to be available right away, which means that there will be financing costs, perhaps bonding costs, we then, in this last version of the plan, we increased the allocation for the West Shore Community College facade improvements to six hundred thousand, and we brought in some more funds to the Riverwalk Plaza related to the building. That is the major change in this plan that you have for your consideration. With that, we can answer any questions related to the plan.
I have a question for Mr. Taylor. Could you give us the staff perspective on this?
Well, from my perspective, I think it's a pretty ambitious plan and worthy of council's consideration. There's a lot of good that I see in this plan. So I would, based on this, I would recommend that council adopt the TIF plan.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't think I'm really clear on the financing, where the money's gonna come from for the facade on the old Glicks Building. Walk me through that again.
Yeah, the, in the table on page sixteen, there are two items, Riverwalk. The last item is West Shore Community College Riverwalk Plaza, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then under Downtown Buildings, the West Shore Community College Facade Enhancement, six hundred thousand. So right there, we have about eight hundred and fifty thousand. The request was for approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now, because the DDA will not receive the revenue, all of the revenue to cover this project, as well as other projects that we have targeted for years one through five, we're gonna have to borrow, most likely bond or some other financing mechanism. So whatever financing we have to put in place, and we have not discussed yet what that financing may be, how it's gonna happen, who is gonna do it, that's why we allocated another hundred thousand towards the financing. And for other projects that we are proposing to fund in years one through five, we also need some financing. Essentially, we're gonna have about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand in TIF a year. So out of that, we're gonna have to cover administrative costs, other costs, as well as projects. So even without the West Shore Community College project, we will have to finance in a form, most likely in the form of a bond. So that's why we allocated more funds for the college project, and then all of the other categories, all of the other projects, in the funding, we also have include some, understand that we'll have to include some financing. But not knowing upfront what the projects would be exactly, when they're going, when the funds would be needed, then we cannot, we're not able to say X number of dollars will be for financing. So financing- So financing costs are incorporated in the, in the project costs. Can I answer your question?
Yes, it does. It's a lot of unknowns.
Sure.
Going to get this and that, and then fortunately, this is just a work session. Nobody has to make a decision tonight on what we're going to do with your TIF plan. So it's just a discussion.
Sure.
I'd like to hear more about alternative ways to do this because that's a big scary number for, for the DDA. It's the long, it's a long term. It's five years longer than it's been before in the past. So it's a lot to think about. I don't know whether the TIF plan includes an agreement yet with the Chamber for Economic Development. And I don't know whether the, the DDA has, has reached an agreement with services through maintenance and, and of the downtown area with our DPW. So those are things that I'm interested in about, but, but even above, above that, I'm glad that the college is here because I would like some information about what kind of classes they might be offering.
If, if I-
Because I think that's what's really important to this community.
Yeah. Council's permission, I'd, I'd like to update council on a conversation that was held with our, with the city's and DDA's Bond Council yesterday afternoon about the facade program. The board asked the Executive Director of the DDA to meet with Ed Bradford to talk about, you know, bonding and, you know, what's the cost and different things. And they brought up the topic of the facade grant for the college. And his immediate opinion was that it was not legal to do that because of the ownership issue. So we had a conference call late yesterday afternoon with myself, Ed Bradford, Caitlin from the DDA, George Saylor, City Attorney, and Scott Ward and Crystal Young from the college to talk through this whole situation. And it was immediately clear that the Bond Council didn't think it was legal and consequently wouldn't sign off on that part of it. So we started strategizing of another way to, to work this out. And so since late, late, yesterday afternoon, we've kind of changed to a situation where to get the money to the college for that facade improvements that would make the facade look like it belongs in the downtown area is that, the thought being is that the DDA would lease the parking lot behind that building. The college would upfront the cost for the facade improvements and the DDA would pay them over the term of the TIF. Whatever it works out to, $20,000, $25,000 a year. And then that would be public parking, which in the opinion of the two attorneys on the phone call, is legal. And then there was also an option of maybe considering a DDA office there. So we've changed because of the opinion of the attorney, that not being able to do that. And, and again, we had that discussion, but it's still, we're still trying to work out the details. The college president, Scott Ward's here, as well as Crystal Young, if you have some questions about that.
Yeah, and I didn't know about it, but the point is that in the TIF plan, the amount we have put here for the college, it's an allocation, as it is for all of the other projects. So we do not know the specifics of how the projects are going to be done, when they're going to be done exactly, and how they're going to be financed. A plan, a TIF plan, does not normally go into details of exactly how everything is going to be done. We make some projections about general projects we want to fund. And we put the funds, or we put the allocation aside, expecting that, that TIF revenue will exist, assuming that the plan is renewed. So as Thad said, there are a lot of details to be worked out. But at this point, based on the projected revenue, TIF revenue, that's what we think we can cover. Now, you also asked about an agreement with the chamber. We do not have an agreement yet, to my knowledge, again. However, we have under the DDA administrative payroll and services, we have funds for contracting out services as needed, whether with a chamber, with a City Brownfield Authority, with another consultant. We don't know what the economic development, specific economic development needs will be. Therefore, we'll address that as we go. And then as related to an agreement with the city for services, I'll turn it to Karen that has been working on that with the TIF Committee and city staff.
And he doesn't work on the, the group Val and Barry works with me to do the contracting and discussions with the chamber in regards to economic development. We do, we did submit a, an outline of a, an agreement. And so they've returned it with their input. And so now we just have to all get together and kind of work out those final pieces. So that is moving ahead. It's just at a turtle's pace unfortunately, depending on everybody's schedules. In regards to the maintenance agreement, we were able to meet sometime last week with the DPW Director and Ed also attended, and then the TIF Committee. And we, we had a proposal for, for an agreement. And it really, the city had come up with one. We kind of sent it back saying, here, we can put all this in. So then it was feeling like it was out of control. So we all sat down, you know, on it face to face and had a conversation. And we were provided information and a former agreement that had been signed by our interim director, which was Tom Kaminsky. And so as we got to talking, we came to some, I believe, some middle of the road where we really don't need a big formal legal whereas and here, there, and all that stuff. We came to an understanding, and I think it was Ed that said it, you know, there's like three levels of management that has to be maintained, you know, in the downtown area. So you just have, you know, like Mr. McCula said, you know, you know, Jeff goes, hey, you know, if it looks bad, I'm going to stop and I'm going to take care of it, you know, and you just do it because it's the right thing to do. And then there's that enhanced service, you know, in which, okay, you know, we need extra whatever in this area because we're having something going on, or, or we need more benches downtown, or whatever it would be, that it's an enhanced from the regular service. And then there are those things that are going to be, you know, emergent, kind of fast acting. And, and so those would require a quicker response and probably a specific pay agreement. And so last week I did said something out, and I don't know if either of you guys, I, I know you didn't get to read it. I don't know if Ed got to read it. Yeah, they told me it was down like number 100 on the emails. And I said, if it says Karen Goodman, it should go to the top. But yeah, it was just really a basic, I think it was like maybe two pages long. And it really just highlights what was said in that meeting, that we agree, you know, that, you know, things will get done. But there's different levels of, of how things are managed. And that's all I can tell you for right now. I mean, I, you know, I might be partial to it because I put it together. I thought it worked out pretty good. I unfortunately didn't bring a copy of that. I have everything else but a copy of that here. It's pretty basic language.
Well, it's a good start. I mean, because we, we've been lacking that for a long time.
Yeah, and I feel, and we had a lot of discussion about, you know, relationships and trust and all that stuff, things that kind of seem to keep tripping up this group, these two groups. But, you know, I left there feeling really confident, you know, I, I trust that it's going to happen. And, you know, I, I think we're pretty honest about everything. And everybody's really came to the same level of, we want to all do the right thing, but we just keep tripping ourselves up. So this document that I put together just kind of moves all that aside and says, you know, we just agree. We understand and, and we're just going to move forward. And when there are enhanced levels or, you know, emergent situations, you know, we will address them and work together.
I would like to add something. In that, in the TIF plan, we have allocated funds for services, maintenance services through the city. A number of items in, that's in the table on Page 16. So the funds, we have allocated funds, the agreement will cover how the funds are going to be used and how the city is going to provide services. But we wanted to cover and allocate some funds.
The thing about, you know, the TIF plan, and it took me quite a while to get my head around this because it's really, it is a shot in the dark. You know, we're hoping that we're going to get all these tax, you know, increments. And, and we hope that the funding will be there. And we would like our, our, our foundation, you know, everything that we have to kind of not have to need major repairs or anything. But we, we truly could only do our best estimates. And, and the thought that we had as a TIF plan, you know, we'd love to see a lot of different things. I'd love to see bump outs. I'd love to see this. I'd love to see that. Of course, I'm just looking at what looks pretty. Mr. McCula is probably sitting back there going, oh my God, more to have to work around, you know? So, so we really have come to a point where it's like, we really have nice stuff. We really have a lot of nice things in our district. We need some improvements. However, we need to really take care of what we have as well, you know, and just keep enhancing those things. So not going out too far, probably the, the college is probably the biggest newest thing out there. You know, we do want to do some things with the downtown. We are certainly into having renovations for people to, you know, have housing down there and stuff like that. But the major projects, we, we kind of feared away from, except for the college and just going to work with what we have.
Well, reading the TIF plan over and looking at it three, four times, and still need to look at it some more. The city would not be able to afford to do what this plan is doing on its own. We need that, those tax dollars. We don't need to give them back to the county. I see Mr. Don sitting back there. We, we, we need to keep those tax dollars here. We need to keep those tax dollars in the city and keep using them to better our downtown, our DDA district. We, we could not even come close to, to doing what's being done here.
No, and, and really just the management stuff, what's already out there, you know, hundreds of thousands.
My only concern and reservation is, and it goes, it goes back to trust. I see it. I know it's a plan. I just, in reality, wonder how much of that plan will, will come to reality. Will, will get done. I think council has some control over that and can kind of be a watchdog in that area, make sure that these things do get pushed forward and get done, so.
Mayor, you will notice that there is a number of items such as the rental rehab program and updating and refurbishing and property acquisition. These funds that the DDA is going to bring in are just a portion of the total project cost.
Sure, I understand that.
This is just seed money. For every, we anticipate that for every dollar we are going to put in, we're going to be bringing in at least $3 to $5 in other funds, private and state. That's the only way these projects can happen. And that's how they have happened so far.
Any other questions for-
Karen, you know, I'm, I'm new to this TIF stuff. When, does the college provide any money into this facade? Or is it just the TIF money that's going to provide for the facade?
The facade, which may most likely be some sort of way we're going to borrow money. We will put that money to the college to help with that facade. For help them to finish it. I think they were like-
The college is bringing in, maybe you can talk about, I mean, this is just a portion of the whole project.
Well, we want to get to the whole college project. They, they kind of run in together. Do you want answers for about the-
I just wanted to know if the college was providing anything besides what the TIF was doing.
We're, we're looking at a $5 million project, and about a half million to take the facade improvements to what I believe we've heard feedback from the city or the community is what would make a historical looking building to fit in. But that's additional money in addition to, as I was pointing, four and a half million dollars or less.
I just wanted to know what, what was going on.
And we, and the college was wonderful enough to bring some mockups, you know, some ideas. So we got to see, I mean, you know, it would be great if we could go for the highest. But, you know, we, we saw the plans and, you know, they're beautiful and-
Here's my alma mater, I know about the college there.
Anything else?
I, I would just like to make a suggestion that this can't be the only time we touch on the TIF plan. I hope we have a couple more work sessions at least to, to go over it in more detail maybe, and just invite the DDA, come, come talk to us.
Is there a deadline to approve this though?
Ed, when does the last, when's the last payment?
This will expire when the, when the bond is paid off. And I, I interpret that to be the end of our fiscal year, you know, it kind of goes on a fiscal year basis. But we can get clarification. The last, the last bond payment is before the end of the fiscal year. So I don't know if that's the exact trigger of the disstage within that budget here. So there is a little bit of a sense of urgency. The council does want to extend that to get that done sometime in the next couple of months.
Mr. Lynn? Did you have something? Barry?
I just wanted to add one comment. One of the other minor changes that we did throughout the document is in trying to tie this into other initiatives that are ongoing. So in the list of each project, there's a little code at the beginning, and there's a little key that describes it. Every one of those projects is tied back to some either goal or task in the Project Rising Tide Economic Development Strategy. So everything in there is meant to tie back into the other initiatives that are going on. I just wanted to point that out. We actually went through and tried to make sure, is this thing we should be working on, based on those other documents, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Anybody else have any questions?
Just one, does council want this on another work session?
I, I think we should.
Okay, I will add it to the December work session.
Thank you. Just very briefly, could, we have an update on what, what you're going to do in the building?
Oh, yeah.
We're kind of like in the dark here.
All right. Thank you, thank you. The, so, I mean, I'm going to try and be brief, but I can go passionate about this. So as I looked at this project and I brought it forward to our board, in this project, I see three pieces to the college mission. One is the academic workforce development. But we are also an economic development engine for the communities. We're also a social agency for the communities. What I heard tonight about the homeless, our students, many of our students are facing those struggles. So it's very important for us, as we work within our communities, to look at those struggles for our students. And that's, most, most of our students, and that's community colleges across the nation. It's not the cost of tuition. It's not the cost of fees. It's housing insecurity, transportation insecurity, food insecurities, and often childcare, which are the constraints that students fail. So one of the aspects of this project is we're bringing education closer into the community. So that helps some of those, helps leave some of those aspects. But through this project, we are also working in collaboration with some of our other close partners, the Chamber of Commerce in Michigan Works, who also have much of their missions aligned with our missions on the workforce development, community development type of missions. So it's that collaboration, because in this building, we will have all three entities sharing space and utilizing the same space. The college does not need that full building to operate 24/7. Working with our partners, we have the efficiency, the scales of efficiency to make the best use of that building. And it also allows us to collaborate, gain the efficiency- use of that building and it also allows us to collaborate, gain the efficiencies of collaboration even closer than we do with those agencies at, at the moment. So, our intent, although it's threefold, to hit all three pieces of those missions to directly answer the academic, we hope to offer at least one full certificate program here. Most likely the management skills certificate, certificate is typically thirty credit hours. And that is working in conjunction with the Manistee High School, is we hope that as many students as want can finish the certificate while they're in high school, get those first thirty credits out of the way while they're in high school. Years ago, the college invested in the Manistee Education Center owned by the hospital and we still utilize that. We do not anticipate not utilizing that, but that is restricted to our use only in the evenings. We are seeing growing demand, especially from the high school age population, for daytime classes. That's one of the reasons we need additional space in the community for our daytime offerings. We'll continue to use the hospital also per our agreements with them. So, the management skills certificate, but also looking at how we can expand to more transfer coursework as students or community members, adult students, transfer to four-year programs that we have partners with. And the college has recently, along with every, all twenty-eight community colleges, have recently expanded the transfer ability with nineteen of the four-year institutions across the state. So, we've eased that transfer and as we've eased that transfer, we can better offer our services at a much lower cost to transfer to the university systems. So, I hope that answers educationally what we're hoping to do, but again, I, I, I really encourage you to look, it's, I'm not looking at, if it was just us coming in to offer classes, I would not be doing that project. I really see it fulfilling all three pieces of the mission of the college, the economic development, the community development, the social aspects of the college, plus the educational workforce development.
Thank you.
And, and just from a, another piece, as we went into this project and we do have a donor who's contributing some money to this, wishes to remain, remain anonymous, he had the same vision which I did when we first had the, had a first conversation in that not only is it doing all those mission pieces of the college, but we are also going to beautify downtown and hopefully drive more traffic into downtown. So, that is our intent with this project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Chamber quarterly economic update. Good afternoon.
Council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide an update. This, somewhere.
It works, it works bad, horse.
It, it's restarting, sorry.
Okay.
For some reason it shut down.
Well, while we catch up with that, I wanna say thank you to the city council. Thank you for your support of the Economic Development Council position with the Chamber of Commerce. This is the first quarterly report on economic development activities I have started in September and so, yeah, we will get there. So, this support, along with the county, other businesses, West Shore Community College and, and others have provided additional capacity for the chamber, for the, for the county, for the community. I serve as a primary, my primary responsibility is to serve as a point of contact for business development, so we wanna thank you for that opportunity. One of the things that I started with and, and hopefully we'll get caught up here soon is to review a number of the existing plans that the community has, has done on economic development, place making, housing, et cetera. And in addition to that review, sat down with many business and community leaders to talk about what is needed in the community and one of the first things we did was to develop an area of six priorities for this position. First and foremost is to lead business retention, attraction and growth. The second one is talent and workforce development. The third involves outdoor recreation and tourism and the synergies and the opportunities there with that sector that speaks to our assets here in the, in the area. We also have, have on the priority list, place making and housing. We also want to grow entrepreneurs, necessary skill sets and small businesses. And then finally, to build a collaborative environment and to have effective communications. So, those are our six priorities with the, with the list. These reflect the strengths and the opportunities for growth as well as the challenges we face. So, the next section I wanted to, to hit upon was a, a quarterly progress at a glance report, to just kinda hit the highlights. So, we wanna talk about retention visits. We've started up a retention visit program. We have had ten of these visits in the last three months. We have brought in some additional partners to bring value to these retention visits. Michigan Works and EDC are now partnering with us to, to do the retention visits on second category businesses. And we also have been working with the businesses to position them for grants and for other resources, so it's been a success so far and per our agreement, we're going to be continuing that work in the future. We also have been working on two transformative projects downtown. We had a lengthy discussion just prior to this presentation on one of those, working towards that to help the downtown with those projects. We also have been meeting with developers and I also wanna report that we have had three referrals for new startup businesses to the small business development folks. So, we've been busy fielding phone calls and working with them and then fielding, referring them to folks at SBDC. Some additional, some additional work that we've done, we've been building or reaffirming relationships with state and regional partners. We've had a number of meetings in my first three months. We also have been leading and facilitating Manistee Forward, taking the Project Rising Tide work and stepping forward with our partners in the community. We also have been working with organizations like the DDA on Spark, working with the planning, county planning folks on outdoor recreation and trails, working on education and business workforce training as well with other partners. Then finally, we have had housing discussions and meetings to improve housing. We also hosted and, or co-hosted a, a meeting with the lending community to work on how we might be able to address some of the housing issues in, in the community. Moving forward, we will have a number of things that will include the continued retention visits, we'll continue on our project work and finding ways to collaborate within the community. We will be working on redevelopment-ready sites, marketing and seeking developers for these priority properties. We'll also be working towards education and training programming for 2020, our continued work with Manistee Forward and the community partners, and also working more on communications. And so, that's a, a brief update without the slide deck, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them and also fortunately, we, we had the contact information up, but you all have business cards and feel free to contact me at any time. Would look forward to the interaction with you and to work with you.
Could you email the city council members or the city staff your slideshow so that we could?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps we might be able to do that from the, from the city manager's office itself.
I can include that in the weekly update.
Any questions? Council members, any questions? Thank you for all your hard work. I just kinda have one. Since you've been here for a short time, is there any, is, do you see any more enthusiasm in our downtown or in opening businesses in general?
I...
From, from developers?
That's a great question and I, I think that whenever I've been approached by people seeking information or, or to start up a new business, they certainly have been enthusiastic and, and hopeful and I think also too, whenever you take that step forward to, to open up a business or to work on, on a new project like that, you have to have some amount of optimism. You're, hopefully you're gonna move forward. So, from, from that aspect, we've, we've seen some, some good people stepping forward to make changes and to, to work with us. I also think too that, that the, the organizations and the leaders in the community have been grateful that we're putting attention towards, towards this area with economic development and a lot, there's a lot of partners, a lot of people playing roles in, within the community to, to work together. And you can look at, you know, folks in the Chamber Board, the business community, you can look at the DDA and some other, other boards, the CBB that we work with. I think that there's a, a good deal of talent and, and, and so I think that, I think we're seeing at least an acceptance of, of this role and to, to work together and I think there's some goodwill and, and hopefully we'll be able to capitalize on that and make some small wins in the near future.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks a lot. Appreciate your update. Next.
About that, it just crashed.
We have a discussion on the, on draft cost recovery ordinance. Public Safety Director.
Good evening. I believe you've had a copy of this maybe for a week or so, so you could peruse it. I know that prior, we used to have a ordinance committee and I think it was the intention to try to get in front of the full council. This is something that I brought to the city manager's attention that I thought was necessity for the city. We respond to a lot of situations, emergent situations, where we could be recouping some costs for our services. As, if you've looked through the document itself, it is pretty specific that this isn't to city residents other than one exception, and that's when you have some recurrent issues. That'll be, an alarm at that person's residence, I think it's outlined right in the ordinance three times within thirty days, so it'd have to be pretty recurrent for us to be able to charge. The biggest thing that we would come out of this is when we're sitting on our down power lines, when we're assisting with an extrication, we would bill and they do get paid. Every single township in the county, when I go to the fire association meetings, bill for their services as far as for the down power lines and those type of emergency situations or hazmat situations and they wind up recouping costs to be able to pay for those services 'cause we're taking our firefighters out of service now for multiple hours sitting on a line. I think it'd be, be hope is to at least try to recoup some of those funds and the only way we can do it is to have an ordinance in place first.
Who would be getting those funds from? The electric company or from the...
Consumers' Power, yes. Just an example, I, different townships bill differently on those. I think it's billed right in here, one of them is on the cost recovery, that it would have to be a resolution by city council on the charges that we would have. For example, one of the townships they bill, I think it's five hundred dollars for the first three hours and three hundred dollars an hour after. Go sit on a power line. You can't tell you how many power lines we've been sitting on here in the last month, especially with the weather changes. And that's one instance.
Doesn't consumers, DTE usually have funds available for that? Don't...
They actually have a person that that's all he does, works on those, on those remittances. And we'd be, we'd be working right with them directly. We've also had other instances, just recently where we had a accident that took us a very long time to sit on with a semi, that took a lot of work on our part that we could bill insurance for, for those type of incidents with a hazmat situation that came out of that with a spill.
Would bomb threat is in this, is that like for the school? Would you be charging like the school for that or...
No, no. We want to be able to put the list of items that we would like to, you know, we could. When you have an individual that makes a threat, that closes down a business, that closes down a school, there should be some type of way to be able to seek remuneration from that person that did that threat because now we cost a lot of time either on the business or on the schools dime, not only our dime, so it's, that's why those are written in there.
Could you explain responding to excessive requests for emergency assistance? Does that have something to do with our mutual aid agreement?
No, that's what I indicated before, if we, you have a business, let's say, and they, for, for some reason, we have had several businesses that have repeated issues with their fire alarm and we're responding there numerous times a day or within a week or within a month and we ask them to repair it, but we keep having to respond, this will at least give us some teeth that we can now send them a letter, put them on notice, failure to rectify the situation, we happen to have to respond again, within that three times within the thirty days, we can now bill you for our response. That's what the recurrent.
Doesn't the state, county, when they get so many false alarms, they just tell them we're not coming anymore till you fix them?
Not, on the, for the merchant, we'd have to, we cannot not.
No, I mean, you go and check it, but then you make sure that it's just another false alarm.
Correct, we'll always still go and check, correct.
Yep. I sat on a lot of those accidents, I know what it is, powers.
So, there's kind of an open-ended statement at the end. It says, "Other services not specifically listed that are determined by the city fire chief or public safety director to be fire, to be fire protection or other emergency services." So, you can make a determination as to what is excessive or what you're gonna charge for?
Can you point me where you're looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at cost recovery charges, ten sixty-four point oh-three, the very last one. Aye?
Correct. So, we didn't wanna be inclusive of A through H, so, you know, working with Attorney Saylor, we have that last one there, that is something that we haven't thought of to put up there that, if I believe that is something that is determined to be something that's not specifically listed, that we could do that.
Any questions, concerns? Are you looking for, Taylor, for this to become a...
Yes, if, I can put it on the, I can't make it for the first meeting in December, I could put it on the second meeting in December.
Discussions, any negativity?
It's a good idea.
I just, I do have one question, the false alarm, that's only associated with devices, not just like, oh, it's someone, I thought someone was missing or someone...
Right, it's, it's a false alarm or we're gonna get an activation usually through one of the companies that are associated with that alarm that sends it, so it's a fault of the system, not of the person calling.
Okay.
Okay, I think...
I'll, I'll have it on the, I think it's the seventeenth.
Good for next item.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief. Next, discussion on increasing the number of recreational marijuana licenses. Anybody wanna start that discussion? We had a request at a previous meeting that we needed to increase those licenses or somebody wanted them increased. Council decided to have it put on a work session, so here we are.
Frankly, I think we got enough right now. I don't think we should increase it at all.
I would agree, I don't think we need to increase it. I think we've had so many different changes, I think we just need to stick with one thing and see how it goes and we had all these processes in place, people follow them, let's give them the benefit of the doubt and see where it goes.
Well, we went from unlimited to three, to a discussion between five and seven and we settled on five and that was before the city was starting to take the license, you know, the applications. So, I think, to me, that was the last time, the most appropriate time we could have changed it. So I'm, I'm also reluctant to increase it.
Anybody else have any opinions on this? Staff, do you have any opinions, Mr. Taylor?
Staff had indicated that they were comfortable with unlimited, but it's council's ultimate decision.
Was this a request by the whole city council to put this back on or was it someone...?
An individual.
Oh, I think Mick asked for it.
Yeah, Mick asked to have it put on, but an individual did speak to the issue. A developer did speak to the issue, wanted more licenses.
Right. And I think they also had, the same person had also indicated that they thought unlimited was too much. That we should have a limit on it, so. I'm torn.
So I don't see any support at this time to you change, making changes? Moving on to discussion on marijuana grow licenses?
I think there could be some good opportunities for us to increase those. The two, since they employ a lot more people and they be providing services outside of our area. I, I think we have. I think it's probably time to think about increasing those.
I'm aware that there's one entity that's going through the site plan review process right now, indicating that they would like twelve, which is what we allow. I'm also aware of another entity that's already had their, they've gone through a special use permit for a building and they're looking at grow licenses. And then one of the applicants that successfully got a, a city license where I believe both the recreational and medical also has indicated a desire to build out grow facilities. So, I, I believe there's a need there. And as Councilmember Beaton stated that, you know, this is provide, probably would provide, without doubt additional jobs, probably more jobs than would be associated with a retail outlet. So, that would be my suggestion is that, and I'm, I'm aware of at least three that are gonna be interested in grow licenses and one's already said they, they want all of them.
Do you have any idea what that, we should increase that number to?
Not at this time. One, the one initial plan, they, they own the two undeveloped lots in the North Industrial Park. They were talking about putting up six twenty thousand square foot buildings for grow. And right now I can't remember how many licenses they were anticipating for each building. So, I don't have a number. We can, staff can talk about it and bring back a recommendation to council if there's an interest in increasing the number of grow licenses.
I think that would be appropriate to do some research and see what we could. Any objections to that? Seeing no objections, that would be great.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the grow licenses? Seeing none, discussion on safe harbor and homelessness. Institutions, or some people talk tonight about that? Any of those people?
I'd just throw my two cents in on this. I've been a volunteer at Safe Harbor for a few years now. And I've done some of the overnights and the hardest part to do is to stay all night, stay alert. So, to me, this, this is very personal, cause I've seen, I've seen some of these people, I've met some of them. It's, it's a tough situation. I know it's tough on the churches as well. I did have a chance to talk to the coordinator that I usually work with who calls me to find out which weeks I wanna volunteer my days or my nights to. And I asked her specifically in her opinion, what was the hardest part of this puzzle? Whether it was, was it just having a, a housing facility where, where we had, where we have one place where the homeless go to? Or is it more than that? And she says, actually, what's the hardest part is the job that you like to do, which is the overnights. Hardest part is finding the volunteers to staff that. Now I know, I was, I was happy to hear that we've only got two weeks left. The churches have been doing an enormous job. I don't think you, I, I don't think anybody understands the amount of work that goes into this because the homeless people come in around six o'clock for dinner, which is provided by volunteers. And then they're provided a cot and their bedding that they have to set up. They're, they're required to check in, they're required to turn in their medications, they're required to turn in their weapons if they have any, say a knife or anything like that, that's locked up. If they want their medications during the night, they have to ask one of the hosts for that, to get the medications unlocked so they can give them to them. They have to go to bed by eleven and they have to get up pretty early in the morning to get, to clear up out of there because they're responsible for folding up their cots, spraying down their bedding, you know, to make things clean, kill any bugs, anything that's in it, folding it up. And they, and they get a breakfast. But when you think about it, that's a hard life because then they go out in the cold. And a lot of places they, they will stay at is restaurants or they'll go to the library. There isn't a warming place for the homeless. There is one central place that they can really go to with any kind of security. So, it's a big problem and it's not just a problem that we need to address in the city, but we need a lot of organizations to take a look at it. So, I hope we can find a solution because it is, it is hard to keep going down the same road and seeing this. I saw one family last year where, I was volunteering the first week Safe Harbor opened. A family with children came in. I was also there the last week of Safe Harbor when it closed for the season. Same family was still there and they were waiting to get into Century Terrace. They were close, they said. They had their fingers crossed, they were close. So, it's personal to me. I, I think it should be personal to everybody. This is tough.
I would have to agree. I think that we need to help in this. These people are in our community, they're part of our community. They have every right to be here and get help. And I, I think it's our responsibility to help and see that these people are taken good care of. And they're, and I, I'm aware that they don't just let anybody in, they do if they have background.
Yeah, we coordinate with the police.
Yeah. They're good people.
What, I'm, I'm trying to make it, I'm trying to understand exactly what you need now. What is there, you need volunteers now or you need supplies? What is it that you really need?
I just learned that this was on the agenda today, so I'm not sure who brought it up for the agenda.
Mr. Samansky did.
Okay. So I think he was at the HSCB meeting when it was presented at the time that we were uncertain whether we were going to be able to have Safe Harbor open for the season because we had so many weeks unhosted. And that's probably why he brought it to the attention of the council. Currently, we're always looking for additional volunteers. Ultimately, because we have acquired property through the Catholic community, the old guardian angel facility and the convent, we are looking and, and hoping to get enough donations to do something like what Linda was talking about, to, a place to keep them warm during the daytime where they could take a shower and do their laundry and get on the computers and look for housing and look for jobs. And so, we actually received a ten thousand dollar grant from the DTE Foundation as seed money to start what we're calling an empowerment day center for Safe Harbor. There's a lot of facets to the needs of the homeless. We, of course, work with Pastor George and, and Bob who's sitting here and we would love to see something like that come along. Most of them, when we do get them into housing, if there's openings, they don't come to us just because they're homeless one time. They've been evicted and we know that when they've been evicted from our city housing, getting back into city housing is not likely gonna happen and then it's looking to other options that are available and affordable. And not even putting aside the homeless issue and the housing affordability, we already know that we're lacking in housing for those that would like to come to the community or for employers that need housing for their employees. So there's multi-facets. What we probably currently need the most would be for council to really tell us, is there zoning set in the city if we were to look for space for a permanent shelter? And if there isn't, would council consider zoning a place that is user-friendly for the homeless? That would make our churches be able to participate more. Not every church building is set up in such a way that they have the space available to be a shelter for that week and they're only doing it usually a week at a time. They would like to be able to help more and they do provide volunteers at other churches, but they've indicated that they would be more than willing to help support a single location. We've seen what Traverse City went through, which is what we modeled the Safe Harbor program after. And we know that they fought a lot of community resistance of getting one location and they are currently only still wintertime. We would like to see us go during the summertime. The document that I sent out tells you, we do a tents ministry in the summertime. Our homeless just don't stop being homeless after we close the doors at the end of March. If we haven't got them housed, we then move into a tent situation, which come April first or that first Monday of April, it's still very cold here. And that's not the ideal location. We've worked with some of our campgrounds and we've done the free camping out at, you know, out county a little bit in some of the, the areas that they can do free camping. But the majority of the people that we serve are aged fifty and older. And the ones that we do come with children, I generally have children that are in the elementary age and we've even had infants with us. It, it's not ideal for them in those situations to try to get their children to sleep in a, in a room probably this big where we're housing up to fifteen people on a busy night of Safe Harbor and to keep a quiet place for the children as well as for the adults to have their quiet time. There's a lot of mixtures and what Linda said is true. They deserve the respect and the dignity of any person in this community. We've watched them come in and become wonderful members of society. I can go to Burger King and see one of the managers that was a Safe Harbor guest a few years ago. I can go to McDonald's and go through, drive-through and see some of our Safe Harbor guests because we are not just providing them the shelter at nighttime, but my staff members, Lisa, who's on there, Lisa Clark, she's my family service director. She walks along with them as well as our clearinghouse. We work with them to get, connect to the federal and state resources when they're available. We work with them to get things cleaned up, maybe they need an ID, maybe. So we're working alongside of them and that's why we're successful at getting them housed. But there are some clients that it's not gonna be a five-month season to get them housed because they've been evicted multiple times and getting them housed is gonna be a difficult process. Having something where they could be a little bit longer term gives us more time to make them successful and be good members in the community.
Mr. Taylor, would you be able to look into the zoning issue and see what
Sure.
might be possible about that? There are organizations, once this appeared on the agenda, I, I started talking to organizations. I belong to one organization that could come up with a couple thousand dollars to help the homeless, buy food, buy things that, that they need to survive daily. I, I need to talk with you afterwards so I can get some, I can get some more information. But there are organizations that can help. But what it sounds like to me is volunteering. You need volunteering.
Yeah, it is a very, very labor-intensive outreach to the...
Yes, I've done it a couple of years. What was that, Faith Covenant Church?
Yeah.
Or not Faith Covenant, but yeah.
But to put a, to put a good spin on it, Lisa got a phone call from one of our Safe Harbor guests that was with us last year, who at the end of the season we had not housed. She requested to go down to Grand Rapids. She thought she'd have better opportunity with more resources down there. So we paid for a bus ticket. She called. She is now in her own home. And from our side, she also is connected to a church down there and has found herself in a much better position. But she called to thank us because Safe Harbor was the place that kept her warm and safe during the hardest part of the winter and enabled her to get to a place that would make her successful in life. So we have a, a large impact across the community.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have you, have you ever considered the old school, are you?
Yeah, we, but, but the, the question is would zoning allow there? I mean...
Well, you can check into it.
Yeah, so, you know, we have some options, you know, even within the building that we have. The old convent could serve for the, the quantity of people that we have. We could probably do what we're doing in that building as well.
I appreciate it. I'll meet with you right afterwards.
All right, thank you.
For information. Thank you. Discussion on the county resolution declaring Great Lakes Coast a disaster area, Mr. Taylor?
I just wanted to bring this to council's attention. I think it was last week or the week before the county passed this resolution in hopes of starting a conversation about the, the damage that the high water is causing. I know their resolution got the attention of the state and some officials from emergency management met with Chairman Dons. I'm just interested if, if council is, would like to have this on a council agenda for action and adopt a similar resolution. I had a meeting with a couple of city managers last Friday, two of which were Pet Water and Luddington. They took copies of it. They thought their councils would be inclined to adopt something similar. The intent is to try to get the state to declare this a disaster and petition the federal government for some type of assistance. Or at least start the conversation about what can we do about the high water level? Are there things that we can do? So it's basically to just get communities that are interested in getting the conversation started at the state and federal level because council's aware of the damage that we've suffered because of the high water. Projections are that the, the lake is gonna rise between ten and twelve inches next year. And we're gonna have to spend a considerable amount of money to safeguard our shoreline and more, and most importantly, our river walk. So it's a, it's a real issue for our community. So if council wishes, I can put this on an agenda and tailor this to our needs and, and see if you wanna adopt it.
Any objections?
None.
Seeing none.
Hey Jeff, I see that they got that meeting at Man's eyes and so on for, for fifth?
Uh, December third is the meeting, six o'clock. At the casino, one of the...
We got tonight, we got a meeting.
Yes.
It starts at six o'clock.
What are you trying to say?
You got, you got forty-five minutes, but anyway. No, uh, just to add a little bit on this, this, this came out of Ezra Scott is a commissioner down in Marion County. He was gonna come up here on November twelfth, the, the day when that meeting got canceled due to the weather. We had about a twenty-five minute conversation on the phone, led to this resolution. I wordsmithed it down some and I can tell you in my tenure being a public servant to county, past, I couldn't tell you how many resolutions, hundreds. I've never seen one with a response like this. It's, and, and the same thing out of Commissioner Scott down in Marion, same thing. Been a little over the top. We've gotta start the dialogue. There's, there's a lot of, there's a number of things, resource is just a piece of our puzzle. There's a number of things we need to have some questions answered on. And the permitting process, when water is as high as it is right now, we need to look at changing some of that too, at least when water is high, so.
Yeah, I'd like to have gone to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, do you have anything other? Daft, do you have anything?
No.
With that, we're adjourned.